Your heart.
Asian.
Mm hmm. It's pretty cool.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you. Auto correct.
No, oh, oh.
One sec. And it. Was gonna give me another one.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, Aaron's here.
Okay. All right.
When you press record and we'll start.
We're ready.
All right. There you go. You're ready? Good evening, everybody.
Oh.
Hey, Mary. We're gonna start the board meeting. Then we're gonna adjourn second session. To. One of my super genetic.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. At this time, would you please join me in the flag salute?
I place.
We just. United States. And to really power which stands. Organization. We got. What we're just.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us. At this time, I would like to acknowledge that Director Aaron is on Zoom following this meeting. Do I have an approval for the agenda? Which is the administration recommends that the Board of Directors approve the April twenty six thousand twenty three meeting agenda. Do I have a motion?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion at this time? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. We will now be going into the executive session, and that is in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act provision for executive sessions. The Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Board of Directors will hold an executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation. Action is not anticipated following the executive session. We anticipate that the exact session or meeting should last approximately fifty minutes. With that, I will adjourn, and we will go into our executive session. Thank you.
Welcome. We actually opened our board meeting at five P M. This evening, so we've done the call to order flag salute, and we've approved the agenda. We're gonna pick up on the consent items. The administration recommends that the Board of Directors approve the consent items for the April twenty six twenty twenty three board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items as listed?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I forgot to say welcome, by the way. Thank you. Lovely evening. The sun is finally shining. And we appreciate you taking the time out of your evening to be here tonight. So, thank you. Superintendent comments?
So tonight, we have some special guests with us that we're going to recognize that we're on the consent agenda, the personnel agenda. And I'm gonna let Bobby Snyder, Principal at Donald Isman, kick us off because we are introducing three new leaders for our district that we are super excited about.
Good evening, Dr. Dent, Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Board of Directors. My name is Bobby Snyder and Principal of Donald Isman Elementary, and I'm honored to be here tonight to announce our newest elementary administrator, someone who is eager to know value and support every student at Donald Isman Elementary, helping them graduate ready to pursue a promising future. To help me introduce this outstanding educator, I would like to welcome one of our young speakers, Scarlett.
My name is Scarlett. I will introduce. I will introduce you. I am candidate at Donald Isman Elementary. I will introduce you to your new sister and principal, my mom's friend. Yeah.
Sam Cargill. I just wanted to say I'm so excited and super grateful to be here. Sumner is my home. I love it here. I'm raising my girl here. And I'm just really fortunate for the opportunity to continue doing the work that we're doing here in this district. Thank you.
So again, Sam Cargill, a new entry. Our second introduction. Of course they are. Tony Clark, get on up here.
Good evening. Here's. Okay, good evening, Dr. Dead and Board of Directors. Test once. If that one works.
That worked.
Can you hear? All right, so thank you, Dr. Dead and Board of Directors. It can only go up from there. So actually, I'm really excited to this meeting. I'm really excited to announce the next Assistant Principal of Bonnie Lake High School. I think a theme of the night is gonna be kind of full circle. In this sense, Jeanette Morris, who is assistant, our new assistant principal of Bonnie Lake High School. It's been a it's been a long into one of our I don't know how I think Mike Howard said, I don't know what I feel about this about the box. First student to be a teacher. And now we have our first student to be an administrator. And so Jeanette Morris is a proud Panther. Once
Because the strangest mic I've ever talked into. I am thankful for the opportunity to come home again. And to be a Panther again. Once a Panther, always a Panther, but now it's it's true. So I I'm excited about the year to come and the many years ahead. Thank you.
Yeah. Is that one of your forms? Uh huh, figured so. Any other? Jen? Okay. Okay, well, there you go. They're coming home. Speaking of coming home, someone else is coming home as well. And to lead Sumner High School Spartan Nation, Mr. Sholen, you wanna come on up? Bring Mr. Baines with you? I don't know. We're teachers here, so you just kind of go with it.
All right, so working now? All right. I am excited. Thank you, Superintendent Dead, members of the board. I am excited and honored to introduce Jeff Baines, our new Sumner High School principal, beginning July first. Jeff has been away the last four years. He's been principal at Burlington Edison High School. Prior to that, Jeff served nineteen years as an assistant principal. So much like bringing Jeanette Morris home to Bonnie Lake High School, we are super excited to have Jeff and his wife Marguerite and many, you know, nation once again. Please help me welcome Jeff back to Sumner High School.
Check, check. Anyway, I just wanna the board and Lori for this opportunity and and to be able to come back home and to serve a community special to to me, to my family and a community where my daughter graduated from high school. So looking forward to leading, leading the Spartans into the future. So thank you.
Yeah, welcome home. Welcome back. Okay, so two other quick announcements. One, mark your calendar for May seventeenth board meeting because we are going to celebrate Bang Parkinson. Where is she? Yep, so she just won the state level Business Office Professional of the Year for WASBO. So we are gonna have a big party. And if you've looked at tonight's agenda, well deserved for many reasons, but to earn a state level recognition like that is it's a pretty big deal. So we're gonna make it a big deal. And May seventeenth, if you see balloons and cake and I don't know. Not really sure what else, but we're just gonna have a lot of fun, so you'll want to be here. And my last quick announcement is, for those of you that don't know, this is National Library Week. And I can't tell you what the library meant to me as a kid because I was that kid that loved to go to the library during recess. I loved to read books. It was a safe place for me, as it is for a lot of our kids. Things are magical. They can put books in and create this curiosity and ignite imagination. I loved to read as a kid. I still love to read as an adult, but a lot of it is because of the librarians I was with and the books that they, that they showed me and that they gave me. And a lot of times our librarians are not really recognized. So I just wanted to give them a quick shout out for the hard work they do in helping us fulfill that promise where every student is known, valued, and supported because if you've been at a middle school or a high school, sometimes elementary, kids go to the library during recess, during lunch, because it's a place where they feel like they belong. And I just appreciate so much what our librarians do, our library secretaries, anybody that works in our libraries. Thank you. So there you go. Thank you. This leads us to board member comments. Does anyone want to kick us off with comments?
Well, there's always a lot going on in the district at every level, the high school level down to the elementary. I'll pick one because I'm sure everybody has something they'd like to highlight, but I would like to give a shout out to the Bonnie Lake High School robotics team who went to the world championships and finished and finished in a very proud way to make and to make the district, you know, shine for what it is and appreciate all the effort that they and the staff and everybody that is on that team put in.
Thank you. I just have two quick things that I participated in or was lucky enough to go to. The Community for Families event was awesome. And speaker, we had anyway, the speaker that we had, Erin Jones. As board members, we've heard her speak on several occasions, but I've got to say this time, something about the way she made it so warm and friendly. Anyway, it was wonderful. I was really proud of the work that Mary Lee and her staff did. It was awesome. And breaking into sessions, the session I chose was the mental health and the effects on our youth. And wow, there were some great exchanges of information. And I said, if we had buckets two things, that we could have mentorships available with citizens for students that may need help. And I, I've been interested in that in a long time. But the other one, buckets money again, is to have like a comfort dog at each school. And I know that sounds crazy, but my daughter, who worked for FEMA up at Oso, had a dog there for the congressional liaisons that were there. Everybody was there, and it was a devastating issue. And watching those dogs come in and just lay down at their feet gave it a certain calmness that you just don't get sometimes with humans. So I was kind of hoping for that if there's those buckets coming around. The other thing, I know Lori would probably like to touch on it too, but we were gonna have our one on one. And then Lori texted me and said, we've got a special award for one of our members at Mountain View Elementary, or not elementary, but middle school. And I might not say her name correctly, but boy, talk about the most humble, wonderful person. Tammy. Yes. That's her name. And right. Awesome. And she received an award through the H M H Lighthouse Award. Five hundred names were submitted throughout the country, and she won. And it was so awesome. And maybe Lori could explain more of what, what what she does with her students, but it's miraculous. So I was really touched by that today.
Well, stay tuned for that because we're gonna celebrate Tammy as well. Looking at Steve Sholen right now, super cool experience today, celebrating the work that she's done with an intervention at Mountain View. I mean, just outstanding, nationally recognized inaugural award. She's a superstar. Stay tuned. We'll, we'll bring that one too. We got Bang, we got Tammy. I mean, we've got like this rock star staff, so.
Thank you. I know, Kevin, you talked about robotics, but I just want to touch on it for one second, too. I, I've never seen anything like this before. I've, I've never been to a robotics event before, and so I swung in, and just upon arrival, there were food trucks and people were eating all over Bonnie Lake High School's lawn. And I mean, they were just the energy, just even before you got in the building was amazing. And then you go in the building, and it's, the gym is transformed into this. I don't even, it looks like something you see on TV. It's incredible. There's screens, and then all of a sudden, you're watching it into it, and then all these kids start jumping up and doing chants. You don't even know what's going on, but the energy in there was amazing. And then we walked down and Tony Clark gave us an amazing, was it Sam, the student Sam, I think, gave us a really cool tour of the pit, which is the commons where all the schools have these built structures where they're tinkering with their robots and I, I truly, it was amazing. I left to go to my daughter's soccer game, and then I pulled soccer players back up with me. Like, you guys have to see this. Let's go check it out. And then they were, they were blown away, too, as students who had never gone to a robotics event either. And so I just, just to kind of go off of your enthusiasm for it, I was blown away at the quality of the event. And then the students, so smart. I just thought, oh, my gosh, these kids are amazing. So kudos to the kids, kudos to the adults who helped support them. It was amazing. Glad I got to be a part of it and hope to go again someday. Rick? And Paul?
It's pretty much like Kevin said, there's a lot going on and going, heading into May and June, it's just gonna increase with all the graduation celebrations. And actually, this is the time of year it starts to get kind of fun to be a school board member. Other times, not so much. But with that said, Erin, I would describe the excitement at the robotics competition kind of like a W E event with a cage match around it. It's that kind of an atmosphere. And Sam did a terrific job showing me around the pit as well. And then, like Deb and Kevin, I attended the community summit. I went to the parent leadership group. That's our P T A and P T O organizations within the district. It was much fuller than I think they anticipated because the room was standing room only. And Kevin Olson, our technology director, highlighted all the technology development that's going on and still to come, as well as the upcoming needs that we're gonna have going forward with the technology levy. Ellie talked about the communication initiatives that are coming up in the district. And then at that, I was able to, because I had the P T Os and P T As right there, I asked him, hey, you know, if you guys invite board members, send us, all five of us, an invite. Chances are good, one or two of us are gonna be able to make it to this event. And we actually enjoy going to those things. So I did, I think we all got one. It's a Victor Falls Art Night invitation. I already got it on my calendar, and then I wrote a note on the back so that I probably need to staple it to my head, R S V P tomorrow. Then there was the the Sumner High School Talent Show. It was three hours long. I didn't eat before because I thought it would be an hour. So by the time I was pretty hungry, my wife and I went out to eat afterwards. But it was fun to see three hours of students playing the piano, singing, doing some comedy. They even unveiled who the student was who did Sparty throughout the year. He came back on stage after he took off his helmet or head or, you know, the face. The last thing was this last Saturday, I went to the Bonnie Lake High School Musical Into the Woods. That's the first time I got to see a performance in the pack up there. It was phenomenal. The students, it was, it was great. I'll just say that. They even had an orchestra there. Although I did see some pretty thick beards on a few of the musicians. I'm not so sure they were high school musicians. So they might have been some community members, but it was, it was just fun. I, again, I thoroughly enjoy the fact that this district spends money to include the arts and all that goes along with that. So thanks, Erin.
All right, any other board comments before we move on? Hearing none. I'm getting lower and lower as I did it, and I keep my chairs. So if I disappear, I'm still here. I just, you might not be able to see me soon. Oh, you switched it? Okay. All right. I know, I'm good. All right, this brings us to audience comments. The Summer Bonnie Lake School Board welcomes the public to its meetings. Individuals who wish to address the board should sign up online. Hopefully, you've already done that. Comments are restricted to three minutes, and remarks regarding district personnel are not appropriate for audience comments portion of the meeting. Thanks again for coming out tonight. Yeah. Okay. David, would you like to go over the other parameters?
Absolutely. Comments from the board, from the public are taken under board advisement, may or may not receive action at future meetings. As stated topics, including charges or complaints against employees, employment or dismissal of personnel, acquisition of real estate, lawyer-client relationships, campaigning, and parameters for negotiation should not be discussed in audience comments. Other information, questions, or problems can usually be addressed by district staff. The audience comment period will end when all registered speakers have been heard. We ask that everyone adhere and understand these guidelines. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other form of support or non-support be used. The board will not respond to comments, but will take them under advisement. Speakers should be courteous and professional. Please refrain from using profanity, vulgar language, threatening, or defamatory comments. As a reminder, individuals are not permitted to name a specific staff member, board member, or student during public comments. Failure to do so may result in the board president or designee interrupting or ending the comment. The audience comment process is as follows. Speakers who registered by noon Tuesday, April twenty fifth, will be heard. If you're providing an in-person public comment when your name is called, please come up to the podium and state your name. Please address comments to the school board as a whole. Individuals will have three minutes to speak. I will signal the speakers with the bell when one minute remains. Our first audience comment tonight is Christina Cooper.
Hello, my name is Christina Cooper, and my pronouns are she, her, and hers. I was planning on advocating for an anti-racist policy tonight, but that will have to wait. After February's board meeting, I am reminded that policies are only relevant if they're supported and fully enforced. I'm an education advocate with the N double A C P, and we have received a handful of complaints from parents whose children have experienced and continue to experience racial slurs, gestures, and bullying. When I ask families who they have notified in the district, the most common answer I hear is no one, which is usually followed up with comments like, what's the point? They'll just disregard it. Nothing will get done, or I'm scared of retaliation. I always try to foster positive trusting relationships between districts and families. But I have to say, it's getting difficult. As a member of the district's Equity Advisory Council, I have listened to administrators boast about the district's teaching tolerance staff trainings on responding to hate and bias. However, when members of the Equity Advisory Council met with district administrators in March in regards to the hate and bias that was displayed at February's board meeting, we were told the Equity Advisory Council cannot respond to what was said. The district cannot respond to what board members say or do regardless of the harm the individual causes to their students. And this is And this is happening all over the country, so it's time to move on and give the bad behavior no attention. So help me understand how this board and administration expects its staff to respond to hate and bias when they refuse to do so themselves. It has become very clear to me why families and students are reluctant to come forward when they experience hate or bias of any kind. The families and students that need you don't trust you. And I'm starting to see why. I wanted to end with three foundational concepts held across Native American communities as I think this board would benefit from them. One, let us be careful of one another's wellbeing. Before speaking, think about how your words will impact others. Two, let's all hold one another to being sacred or important to one another. Your elected officials and your words and opinions that are shared publicly have influence on others. And three, we all belong. Regardless of any board member's opinion, if you are a student, parent, or community member within this district, you belong here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Timothy Cooper.
Good evening. My name is Tim Cooper. On February 15th of this year, we were subjected to a certain school board member's eighteen-minute plus rant about the personal and political beliefs about trans issues in their school system. As they went on and on, one thing stood out to me, their specific use of the words six foot, four inches, two hundred plus pound man was used to describe the aggressor and young lady as the victim. For someone who doesn't seem to understand the use and meaning of pronouns, they had no problem using specific phrases to control their narrative and that narrative is one of fear and hate. It reminds me of the media's coverage of Trayvon Martin's murder by George Zimmerman in 2012. Certain media outlets reported on the incident portraying Trayvon Martin as a fully grown man. It didn't matter that he was only a hundred and fifty-eight pounds. It didn't matter that he was only seventeen years old. They wanted to portray him as a big scary man that would be feared, so the murder seemed justified, not abhorrent. All because of his race. This was the narrative put forth to sell fear to the public. Now we're being told, that we're being sold a narrative by the school board member that our school is, our school children are so traumatized by the use of pronouns that they can't concentrate in school, that big burly men are dressed like the opposite sex just to infiltrate the school locker room, the girls locker room, and that this is happening every day in our schools. We should be terrified of this happening to our little angels. Remember, this is not about who plays volleyball, but the real issue is keeping our students safe from things like active shooters, which actually happens in this country. The truth is, our children are just trying to be their true selves. They aren't doing this to be edgy or cool. They aren't transitioning to fit in because it's the newest fad. Can you imagine how hard it is today's society to come out as trans and see these idiots shooting up Bud Light cans on social media because of their ignorance and hate, hate for our children? It's literally a life or death choice for some of these kids. The scrutiny they face in the outside world is hard enough without having the vile hatred and fear mongering aimed at them from school board members that are supposed to have their best interests at heart, not just the white cisgendered students, mind you, but all students. Transgenderism isn't new. It's just newly demonized for political gain in our country. On May tenth, nineteen thirty-three, the Herschel Institute of Sexology in Germany was looted by Nazi-supporting youth and the entire contents of the library was burned. Why does this matter? Because almost all scientific research into trans lives was destroyed that day. Do we really want to align ourselves with these people? At what point in our history? And by the number of books being burned from across the schools, it does seem so. I don't know. Maybe we replace the phrase politically correct with treating people with respect. Maybe we replace woke with empathetic. Maybe we practice some empathy for.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Sharon Vale.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Vale and I attended Sumner High School a million years ago. And my sister and her three sons graduated from Sumner High School. I have five nephews and nieces currently in your district. I realize that not, uh, being a elected official isn't always easy and always fun, but I appreciate the right spirit trying to make your community a better place. Great of things I do not understand. Evil may win, so I'm here tonight. In our country, and specifically in the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District, our non-discriminatory policy clearly states district does not discriminate in any program, services, or activities based on sex, race, creed, religion, color, national origin, age, military status, sexual orientation, including gender expression or identity, and the presence of sensory, mental, or physical disability. Yet here, in this very room, a couple of months ago, during a public school board meeting, in complete opposition to this policy, again, in complete opposition to this policy, an elected official representing the district did not just speak out, but he might as well have kicked his feet up on the desk and had a beer while he hemmed and hawed about his perplexing thoughts. His comments were uneducated, transphobic, and borderline hateful. This diatribe of nonsense went on approximately nineteen minutes. While other board members simply looked on. Not only did I lose nineteen minutes, I'll never get back, but the hours I've spent since going over and over the video to make sure what I heard was correct. These discriminatory behaviors are not only illegal, but the silence from board members sent a message of condolence has within our families, community, and students shattered our trust. Those nineteen minutes could have been spent better maybe researching why we have six teenage boys, at least six teenage boys sexually assaulted at Sumner High School. The coach was alerted to you five years ago that he was a problem, that he was inappropriate. And now we have six teenage boys. Isn't that a little more concerning than what size basketball the girls are playing with or the boys are playing with? I think so. These boys are damaged for life. The ripple effect of the damage to them irreplaceable or irreparable and will go on forever.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Gabriel Freed.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gabriel Freed. Uh, my pronouns are him and I am the registered nurse at Bonnie Lake High School. It's pleasure to see several of you board members here tonight. I am here to talk about the interesting perspective of being a school nurse because it is not just individual students and ice packs from where I come from. I get to have this wonderful privilege to also address and look at the community health as a whole. And if there is one thing that I can say that is very concerning to me is the fact that I cannot diagnose things as a nurse that is not within my scope of practice as a registered nurse, but when I see symptoms such as transphobic rhetoric and other such bigotry or other such bigotry going on within our community, um, I am allowed to examine that and to take a look at how we can adjust that. But I would first like to point out a couple of the issues that I see with this. First and foremost, I would like to really make this clear to everyone in this office, or in this boardroom. When I see someone walk like a transphobe and I see someone talk like a transphobe, there is no thing that you can say essentially to dissuade me from understanding that you are a transphobe. There is no amount of, I don't really care how someone identifies, but, or I don't want to sound like a transphobe, but no, full stop. When someone brings up transphobic rhetoric, that is transphobia. We all agree in this room, board members, community members, and people who are watching, that bigotry is a social pathogen that is unacceptable. That does not get to exist within my community. And for that reason, I wanted to make sure that we are taking notes to stamp this out and to basically block out that space so that cannot have space to exist. Furthermore, there is often this concept as well too, that students seem to owe parents and guardians this idea that they need to come out to their parents. But let me tell you something too. And a lot of these speeches, when I have people make public comments as well too, give kids some credit. Our students are wicked smart. They are observational kings and queens. They know rules for crying out loud. They know what they are doing. They know people who are safe to come out to and talk to. So if they're not going to come out to you as a staff member or as a parent, that is reflection on you. That is reflection on your relationship. If they trust you enough and know that they are safe. I want to make this community safe for my students. I can do that in my health room and I know that we together as a community can do this. There is no culture that exists like this, this idea and concept that exists as a guidebook. We can create a new culture of kindness, compassion, curiosity to go forth and support our transgender students. We do this by asking their pronouns, by sharing our pronouns. Put that in your signature. That's really easy. That's two seconds. That's great. Put your pronouns in there. Make sure you invite people to come to gender-neutral restrooms. You can do that or making sure they have easy access to that or other facilities that they have that. That is something we can do. Invite them to your sports, your clubs, your events when they are a transgender individual. Most importantly too with this is that when you hear transphobic rhetoric, not only do you speak up and say, no more, you do not let that go, you stop being quiet and then you let transgender people speak so they can stand up for themselves and you can advocate for them and empower them. We can do this together, Bonnie Lake High School. We see this diagnosis of transphobia, let's stamp it out. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Steve McCoy.
Hello, my name is Steve McCoy. The Sumner School District provided me with an education that served me very well. My high school diploma carried me far beyond my expectations into a successful career in measurement sciences. Working with engineers and PhD-credentialed scientists that changed our world. Thank you for that. I believe the education I received helped me make a contribution. I've added value to our world. My time in school coincided with the chaos and protests of the Vietnam War of Black Power with protests calling for peace and the domestic terrorism of the Weather Underground. The chaos did not bring peace. Fifty years later, there are still protests and burning cities. It seems we have knew, we have moved no closer to peace. It also seems we are angrier with each other than ever before. Now we have speech labeled as hate. Two months ago, I was here and listened to the comments about policy thirty-two eleven and how it would affect the rights of young girls who are being told they must share locker room and bathroom with biological males. Isn't sexuality a fundamental personal right? Isn't unwanted sexual exposure an intrusion and violation of a person's right? Isn't exposing oneself to a person with different genitalia considered indecent, even criminal? Our constitution protects our right to our own beliefs and the freedom to speak those beliefs, which is fundamental to the democracy of this country. But now, one of the school board directors is being labeled for hate speech and speaking his confusion about the gender policy, saying out loud how we protect all children. Martin Luther King Jr. led the civil rights movement against discrimination and superiority based upon skin color. It was a revolt against bigotry and the mobs who would lynch people simply for holding a different opinion. Labeling people with different opinions is nothing new. We are still labeling people. And now we label their opinion as hate speech. Mobs are formed to silence them, to censor them, and to punish them. It's still a lynching, just using labels instead of a rope. The Jim McCorrode laws supporting discrimination were bad laws. Not all laws are good. The principle is if we believe a lie, we will act on the lie and bad things will happen. We still have some bad laws and we are being told lies and bad things are happening. If we really want peace, we must revisit the principles respecting all people and their differing opinions. We must remember the dream of freedom and justice for all. The dream of a nation where people are judged by their character, not condemned for their opinions. The converse principle is if we believe the truth, we will act on the truth and good things will happen. This is when we make a positive contribution to our world and maybe peace will have a chance. And thank you again for my education.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Kristy Martinez.
Hello. The opportunity tonight, my name is Kristy Martinez. I live in Director District Four. I'm a member of the Sumner Bonnie Lake Education Association. I currently teach at Bonnie Lake High School. I'm also a proud parent of a Mountain View Middle School student and a graduate of Sumner High School. I think the education I got at Sumner could be a better of our, just. I wanted to say tonight a few things, uh, mostly about action. Action is important. My dad, who was also a graduate of Sumner High School, I went to school with him, but he was very different, I think. Um, he always told me growing up, actions speak louder than words. My teachers, my coaches at Daffodil Valley, at Lakewood, at Sumner, always reminded me to walk my talk. And I still still see and feel that in the district here as the teacher. I wanted to say thank you for a lot of action that happened for this year to Dr. Dent and Mary Lee Hill Anderson for all of their advocacy, really working around House Bill twelve thirty-eight, which is now passed as it expands school lunches and breakfasts for students and even more families in our district. So I appreciate it. I also want to thank the board members that are actively taking action to make schools in the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District more safe. I encourage you to continue taking action by implementing the anti-racism policy that's being discussed and upholding in the existing board policy thirty-two eleven, gender-inclusive schools. Here tonight to stand in continued solidarity with my students, colleagues, and fellow citizens who are part of the LGBTQIS two plus, two community. I do not share the homophobic and transphobic views that are currently being shared. After standing in solidarity, the March Board Meeting learned that some of us teachers are now being called activists. As if it's derogatory. Well, I don't condone name-calling, the way I see it at best. My actions, my activism, if that's what you want to call it, will bring about change that results in a school system and community where all students are known, valued, and supported. But even if the name-calling stays just that, a put-down, sudden attempt to make teachers feel some sort of way, at least at this point, your hurtful attention is no longer aimed at the youth of this community.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Tracy Brennan.
My name is Tracy Brennan and my pronouns are she, her. I'm here today as a parent of two students. One at Donald Isman, and one at Mountain View. I'm here to speak up in support of board policy thirty-two eleven, gender-inclusive schools. The first sentence of this policy states, "The board believes in fostering an educational environment that is safe and free of discrimination for all students regardless of sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression." At February's school board meeting, there were comments made that go against this board policy. This is my son, Alan. And he uses he/him pronouns. He is transgender. He wanted to be here today, but due to comments I've heard in this room before, I chose to protect him and he is safe at home. He does not always feel safe in our district's buildings due to transphobic and homophobic comments he hears not only from students, but from adults. As a parent, his safety is my number one priority. I encourage him to speak up, but he is afraid. We talk to him about the balance of speaking up, but being safe. We want to empower him, but we also want him to walk off the school bus at the end of the day and into our home. Safe. Last summer, his safety was in danger. I took him to the emergency room twice, begging for help. He wasn't eating, he wasn't sleeping, he was self-harming, he stopped taking his meds, and he didn't want to live. He felt hopeless. He was scared to go out into the world, afraid what others would say to him when they learned that he was transgender. He felt killing himself would make his pain go away. I begged him to want to live. After the second emergency room visit, Seattle Children's admitted him and he spent two weeks as a patient in their psychiatric unit. They saved his life. They honored his pronouns, never used his dead name, listened to all of his worries about the world. Listen to why he stopped regularly going to school at the end of last year. As this school year began, he showed glee when his name appeared as Alan on rosters and teachers asked students what their pronouns were. Not every day is easy for him. Gender dysphoria is real. Just two weeks ago, a student in one of his classes refused to use he/him pronouns.
I'm sorry, that's the end of the audience comment. Our next audience comment is Sean Foster.
Um, before you speak, can I just?
Before you speak, can I just say one thing? I know you had your comments written down. If you want to leave those with us, we'd be happy to read them even though your time was up. Okay?
My name is Sean Foster and I'm a language teacher at the high school. So I can do a very quick lesson here. If you forget my name and someone says, who's that guy with the shaved head? You can say, uh, he is. Or someone said that, you could say. Compassionate and informative remarks appeal to our sense of justice, fairness, kindness, and respect. We've heard remarks that provide scientific insight into the biological and psychological nature of LGBT people broadly and people living with gender dysmorphia, excuse me, dysphoria specifically. I'm not here to change the mind of anyone specifically, and I do think that one-way dialogue, such as this, is not a great way to do that, but I am open to personal and private dialogue if there is a sincere desire to talk through these issues. I would like to highlight to our board and to those present that we as a district have invested well into the six figures of dollars into positions and initiatives to promote equity in our district, and yet we have not had so much as a statement or an acknowledgement that our district's taxpayer-funded time was used in this meeting and this room. We hashed what amounts to hate speech directly from the highest positions in our district. Our equity directives have always asked us to lean into difficult conversations as a matter of practical necessity, and our leadership in this room has failed to do so, completely failed to do so. We say that we are a community here, at least at Sumner High School, we like to say that. But have these concerned people ever tried engaging in dialogue with these young people? With me as the advisor of the GSA at Sumner High School? With the other club advisors who endeavor to make their schools safer for our LGBT students, for all students? I don't think we have. And instead, we get rehashed content derived from right-wing YouTube videos fed to people through an algorithm that knows that hate keeps people glued to their screens and watching advertisements and then fed to us as official remarks from our leaders. And in reality, despite any narrative, the trans kids are running the show around here. The reality is they are harassed daily in our halls. I see it as the advisor at S H S, I deal with it as a teacher, and they don't know about our board and they don't know really about the comments in February. They don't know they can go watch these recordings. They don't know anything about that and they don't need to. And that's the problem because these remarks are a dime a dozen. Nothing was said in this meeting in February, all possible comparisons of public commentary being compared to racially motivated mob killings. All the rhetoric and apparently breathless hypotheticals about rights just amounts to one drop in a sea of hate that these students, these people are drowning in every day. They don't need to hear the comments from us in this room. They hear it behind them in class, they hear it on the internet, they hear it. And our district, by failing to address that their own district allows their harassment to follow them from the halls of their schools to the elected leaders, the people that their parents pay to help educate and direct the board for them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Chris Ijama.
Hi, my name is Chris Ijama. My pronouns are she/her. I have three children in the district. Thank you, Dr. Dent and school board members for having us here tonight. There are two issues I'd like to bring forward to the board tonight. The first is to recommend the adoption of an anti-racist policy for the school district. The second is to support the rights and individuality of all students in the district. Adopting an anti-racist policy is a crucial step in assuring that we are providing an equitable environment for learning. This policy provides a tool for teachers and staff members to use when instances of racism occur at school. It helps to create an environment where all foods are seen, heard, and valued. In a previous school board meeting, one school board member spent eighteen minutes devaluing our LGBTQ student population. This goes in direct opposition to the district's stated mission, valuing all students, seeing them as the unique individuals that they are and nurturing them to be stewards, leaders, and innovators. Valuing students and embracing their true selves enables students to engage in learning in a supported environment thereby adhering to the district's future-ready strategic plan. One such goal is to nurture, engage, and empower students. For this to be accomplished, we must value and support everyone. A nurturing environment does not tolerate or support bullying, othering, hate speech, or exclusion. LGBT students, LGBTQ students face an alarmingly higher rate of bullying and violence in school than their cisgender peers. According to the American Psychological Association, nearly eighty-seven percent of LGBTQ students report harassment at their school over the past year and sixty percent felt unsafe. Nearly thirty percent of transgender have been threatened or hurt by somebody on campus. That is compared to the percentage of cisgendered youth. And values within the school district, we need to support all of our students, especially those most vulnerable. As a district, we must speak out against othering, offhanded, and off-putting comments that disparage our youth and stand up for the rights and recognition of all of our students. It is in doing so that we create an environment of success in the Sumner and Bonnie Lake School District and support inclusion. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me speak to you.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Terry McCoy.
Good evening, my name is Terry McCoy and I've lived in this district for forty-five years. I want to thank Superintendent Dent and each of the directors for being present this evening. My respect for the positions they are elected to is continually growing the more I learn about our system. And as we've heard tonight, board members are not exempt from being bullied. I also want to thank Kelly Dent, Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services, for a successful meeting this week over my academic concerns in our district. What is it about bullying that we all intrinsically know is wrong? No one is exempt from hateful speech. It happens to all of us. That's reality. I wish it wasn't so, yet again, we all know it happens. The categories are almost endless: body type, gender, race, nationality, psychological health, family structure, and so on. What I've noticed happening in our schools at all grade levels is an attempt to re-engineer society as a whole, not representative of the general population. By taking the laws of nature and creation and reducing them to political identities of oppressed or oppressor is destructive for everyone. To segregate or isolate students and/or adults, to intimidate or instruct them with propaganda will destroy hope, happiness, and unity, whether in sports or academics. Kids, and yes, some adults, are left afraid, divided, uncertain, and lonely. This ideological anti-normative social movement desires to dismantle, dissolve, and deconstruct relational bonds of reality, like the family, schools, churches, businesses, and so forth. How can we hope all children in our district will succeed in school and beyond if we keep allowing the use of language in our schools to destroy human value, worth, and confidence, no matter what category or categories any of us fit in? I want liberty for all students, parent educators, employees, and our district more than any individual or group being able to coerce, bully, or shame any adult or child into compliance against one's own conscience. Why are we allowing the dismantling of our education system, leading to kids graduating without some even having functional reading skills or doing basic math? What can parents and grandparents do together with our teachers and administrators to compel the children in our middle and high schools to even attend classes? Social construction is a serious matter. It's how we live, it's how we speak, it's how we operate in the real world. But please do not misunderstand. Is our American society without flaw? Absolutely not. Can we all do better for all our students and our community? Absolutely yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Jamie Gadsby.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Gadsby. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a district employee, work at Bonnie Lake High School. I'm a soccer coach in the district, a mom of two now adult sons who graduated from Bonnie Lake High School and Sumner High School respectively. And I'm a community member who has lived in Bonnie Lake for ten-plus years. I'm here tonight with concerns that there have been negative comments and opinions made towards our district's gender inclusion policy and procedures. As an employee and coach, I've had the privilege of working with so many of our wonderful students. My concern is that a marginalized group of students in our community rumors from adults who should be here to protect them. Rumors, secondhand stories, and opinions do not equate to objective data or findings about what is actually happening in our schools. Decisions regarding our students are driven by data and it's disappointing to see opinions interjected into policymaking. It's saddening and disappointing to hear comments made ostracizing our students' gender. When a student comes to me and gives me their preferred pronouns or chosen name and realizes they have a safe space, there is a weight lifted from them, a visible show of relief, and a willingness for them to share and be open with us. In those instances, we, adults in our building, have been able to help several students who are suffering from ideations of self-harm or in harmful situations either at home or school. It's such a simple thing and yet can be so impactful. Supporting our transgender students is so impactful that it may prevent us from being called into yet another all-school emergency morning meeting where we learn that we have lost another student to suicide. My only hope is that all of our students feel safe, unconditionally cared for, and understood. If you truly do not understand something, make a concerted effort to do so. Be open-minded and talk to our students, all of them. Just a very simple survey sent out to students to get an understanding of the climate of a school is not enough. Get into our schools and talk to these kids. They'll tell you what scares them, they'll tell you what makes them happy, what gets them through their days, what their concerns are. If you really want to know what's happening day to day, simply ask them. They're truly amazing, bright, kind, creative, and loving. It's all of our responsibility to make sure that every day, they all feel valued and respected. Our LGBTQIA students do not need further isolation and marginalization. They need and deserve acceptance, understanding, and an environment that fosters creativity and self-expression. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Melissa Russell.
Hi, my name is Melissa Russell and my pronouns are she and her. I don't have a super formal statement. I am tired. I'm really tired of having to fight for what students deserve. And just to give you a little background, I did speak last month, but I have three graduates of Sumner High School. I graduated from Sumner High School. I have five children enrolled in the district who are with me today that are elementary students. They asked me on the way here, is this going to be bad? And I said, well, there'll be people speaking that we might not agree with, but we all have different opinions and that's okay. They are both very aware that they have a transgender sibling and they're very protective of him and they are very accepting. It's not even an issue for them. As far as dismantling the societal structure and all of that, super confusing to me. I don't understand it. I think we accept people where they are and I don't agree with everyone else, but I try to accept them and embrace them where they are. I would love to focus on an anti-racist policy in the district as I have several children of color, but we can't even get through this, so I'm not sure how that's going to happen. I would appreciate and expect some support from the board for our transgender population. I would love to hear a statement sent to the community from all of you stating your opinions when it's a policy already in the district that everyone's already spoken to. I don't understand how the board, what the board function is. I thought you were supposed to support and enforce policy, you know, lead with equity, support all. Those are the things that come to me, but I don't understand. So I, you know, of course, have this very personal connection, but even without that, it's important for us to include and accept all. And, you know, just as a side note, there is a member of your board that knows this transgender student or used to know this transgender student quite well. And it might be something to think about, like you all may have someone that you care about or love that you might think about protecting and looking out for. I just wanted to say that it would be really great to hear from all of you and to really, you know, say that you have a stand against the statements that were made prior and that you support equity and inclusion for all students and really actually mean it would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Teresa McClymonds.
Hi, my name is, whoa, hello? I feel like it's not on for this long. Okay, all right. Hi, my name is, oh, and can you go back? I'm sorry. I was like baffled. Okay, thank you very much. My name is Teresa McClymonds and I live in the district. Freedom of expression, my North Star. Research history and delve deep into his good book. Listen to the personal testimonies, the one-eighty turns that people have took. Thank you, Father, for sending your son. I accept what he has done. Perhaps some of you are offended by my poem that I just shared, but my intent is not to offend, but to merely, with all vulnerability, to simply share. I'm not asking you to follow my North Star, I simply shared. When freedom of expression, therefore freedom of conscience, is honored, it brings confidence and security to the individual sharing. When the government, the school district, and its members respect the rights of the people to exercise their freedom of expression, this allows for many diverse opinions to be expressed. This is healthy. This is health and cultivates an environment where good conversations and learning begins. By tolerating and then listening to diverse opinions, the attribute of love and respect is brought to the table. A thick skin develops along with good character. Tolerance is a virtue and when practiced, it cultivates a culture where the pure definition of tolerance is experienced. It becomes contagious. It develops a foundation unshakable and a very, very cool place to learn and to work. Do we really want a solution, a resolve to this divide? If yes, then a deep respect and commitment to defend one's own, one another's, excuse me, one another's freedom of expression must be foundational. At that point, we will all be slaves to no one. We will be slaves to no ideology or religion. So let's please create an environment, a healthy one for the children, so that they can thrive and some of those, all of those OSPI academic scores can be raised up. So let's focus on reading, writing, arithmetic, and developing a culture that becomes, that welcomes true diversity of thought, knowledge, and convictions. I suggest that, rated through twelve, diligently study the art of debating, formally learning how to debate in competition. By doing so, students will be motivated to research both sides of important issues and they will develop themselves to be good listeners, critical thinkers, and great speakers. And have confidence.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is James McClyman.
Hi. My mom named me James Kelly McClyman. She called me Kelly. That's the way my family rolls. So I register as James, but you can call me Kelly. It's good to be back here. Been here a couple of times, trying to make an argument over a period of time that there's a culture that's inherent in Bonnie Lake. We can look at facts and data, I've talked about that before, that demonstrate kind of, you know, demographic big bounds. You have your own demographic studies also that kind of bear out the character of that. So please don't take any of my comments as pitting one group against another, but more of understanding where we're at. So that's why I wanted to talk to you about cultural competency. So in order to do that, what I want to do is I want to go to the root of the law, R C W twenty-eight A four fifteen four forty-three. It defines cultural competency as cultural competency includes knowledge of student culture, histories, and contexts as well as family norms and values, different cultures, knowledge and skills, accessing community resources, community and parent outreach, and skills in adapting instructions to students' experiences and identifying cultural context for individual students. So that is the definition and that definition is used in the school director's governance, cultural competency, diversity, equity. So that is the definition and that definition is used in the school director's governance, cultural competency, diversity, equity and inclusion report, also RCW 28A 3415 that says, one, a, develop cultural competency, diversity, equity and inclusion standards for school director govern. So WASDA has to create those things for you, right? That's the law. The law also says, the school director governance, cultural competency, diversity, equity and inclusion training programs. The Washington State School Directors Association shall identify and develop periodically update governance training programs and align the cultural competency, diversity, equity, inclusion standards for school director governance developed under RCW 34 5 dot 15. The governance training programs must also include building government-to-government relationships, federal recognized tribes. So there's obviously a requirement in the law for training. Governance Training Program, Art 28A 343 100 says that, except as provided, that beginning in 2022, each calendar year, each board of directors shall complete a governance training program. So the law says that there has to be a program developed. The law says that you have to be trained. It also says the same thing basically in RCW 28A 410 265 for the professional educators, right? So RCW 28A 410 260 says that the standards board has to have a cultural competency, diversity, equity, inclusion standard as well. And then finally, the professional learning days, there is one
Thank you. That ends the comment. That ends our audience comment period.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a break. Let's come back in about 10 minutes, about 7:15.
The word adopt this resolution is one project. So again.
Again.
Thanks.
Did you say another?
Yeah.
What do you want to say?
I can't believe we're here. This is the day that we celebrate.
Well, if it's a good example, think exactly what that means.
Opening summer high school, May first, right? Remember, students will be in the building. This May first. That's undecided. And then all those people say aye. Recommendation, the district administration recommends a word about resolution number sixteen. Behavior maintenance care and projects to approve. Three, looking at income for the federal test group on the general line. We have a five person order to. We in that category, so we make your maintenance care. Write your motion to approve. Right, second.
Second.
Any discussion? And then all those in favor say aye. Post. Then motion. A lot. No kidding. Those are amazing. Yes. For your information, the legislative support for three included. No presentations at this time. Also included information or quarterly public reports. We have two. Change orders. One, one change order. Summer high school phase one building. Listed there. For your. That's the board discussion. Any? Any more discussion this evening?
Okay.
Oh.
So on the transfer of sync. So it's very important. This is the element was kind of all running, running before it's kind of get longer throughout the year and then you see the problem. And then we can kind of keep passing on it or at least have a highlight. If there was one that taken like six months to throw it out. Might pay the last questions. If we want to, but with only a three. Three month glimpse, I'm assuming everything before that closed, but it might not. So I'm wondering if we could include the ones prior to three months, maybe even up to a year that are not closed. So that we can see that maybe I've got serious plans. Staying longer than three months to get close. And then if we had a question, call. Right. It used to be you can have a running record. It was spoken be. Doing the good news last week. I don't need a one.
Any other discussion?
I had a question. The policy committee has already did an update on various policy requests.
You want to do it and what? Well, if one of those things, there's, I mean. In the policy. Committee, there's always a big chunk right at the front there. I'm calling more easy policies, right? There you know, a couple of word changes. Update something new, maybe from. So we've got a little first typically, and then we move to the more. We only spend about an hour, hour and a half tops a month, that's what it takes along a waiter wants to use her. But you can go back all the way. So next week is on the agenda and but it's there's some other way to get through first. We prefer to crack at it. I submitted a standalone policy that prohibited racist, racist pet comments. During the debate, nothing settled now. It's just internal discussion. I can tell that the administration was being more heavily towards. We don't want to have a standalone policy for that. It would make more sense to add some language to our new policies that specifically stated like race comments. So so that we don't just keep adding policies from this particular day where somebody goes and says. Let it out. Somebody heavy said, do we need our policy for that? So. They're looking at. Policies that can be expanded and broadened. And then there was a equity policy. I brought two examples. Other people had others to look at. So we'll read through that and see whether it fits for the. Or possibly, I mean, the other question, is it needed? And for example, on that, I brought it in, in case somebody asked. Here, you can see. Well, there's, there's equity wins, things is asked by the thing, whatever we're doing policy. So whether we're doing curriculum, things like that, by practice, some questions to ask. That's probably pretty good. But so here's some samples that do it some again. And I highlighted them, but at the very end of a couple of these, you can see the cross records. This one here has. One of them has like seventeen cross records. Seventeen, the other one is twenty-two cross records. Other policies. It's all the gaps. You get a good sense that very happy policy. So do we need a standalone like this? Or do we need to focus on what we already have and type it up and and maybe add different titles? That can maybe more easily direct somebody toward. A racist incident occurs in school. You know, what can the principal look it up and say, oh, it comes with bullying, harassment and intimidation? Well, maybe. But if it says racism at the top, it's a lot easier to find, right? No breaks from now. So both are discussions that are on. Is that an update for you?
Yeah, if you mind, I can summarize that to make sure I review it.
Sure.
That was a really good, you know, summary. I appreciate you giving kind of a role us. Be on that. So sound like typical policy community meetings, there's kind of the basic policies you're required by a lot of. We updating constantly. So you got to get through those. Some of those types of policy changes. And the discussion that you had the last meeting was more around looking at current policies and how they could be typed up towards harassment. And then the question of debating whether a standalone policy is even. Is that a summary?
Sure. And you know, I just noticed I didn't have my green light, but. We might come back to the standalone. You never know. I mean, things get hashed out and stuff. And so. You know, go ahead. You gonna say something?
I simply asked something because I just thought. I clearly have a different memory of the district not saying that we did not want a standalone. Policy. I mean, that, that was.
They're talking about an equity policy, you're talking about a standalone racist.
Well, it's also that's still in a draft form. It's still to be named, right? Because a lot of policies can mean a lot of different things. So. We haven't even officially decided on a name, but still talking about policy. And while you did submit a standalone policy, I too submitted a policy for consideration after that meeting. Because we felt like we needed to strengthen certain policies and consider. What a standalone policy to meaning that some point would look like. So I just, I just want to make sure that I clarify that because it, it sounded like. The district wasn't interested in a standalone policy, which. Isn't, isn't my reflection at all.
It was under the assumption that we were looking at. Strengthening the. Corrosion, intimidation and bullying policy, including some visual language. And also the stability policy. And that would encompass. The search for. Any anti-racist comments, issues like that, then. We were leaning more towards that and not. Standalone policy. I know there was talk about. Equity policy. I wasn't sure that we ever. Got to the point where we were thinking about standalone equity policy. We already have that in plan. A lot of equity. And, but, and my reflection was that it was. The strength in the current policies that we have. And really not mean words to stand alone.
So it sounds like there's this, sounds like there might be a difference of memories about what happened to the last meeting.
There's an internal session that's still going on. And I'm not the only person on it. Equity power that possibly the district, so others. You clearly give me their perception, but. I don't think we remember this the same way. I know the district needs to know we're. We're working towards it, it's right. We did strengthen policy that you should see on a may senate team for agenda. And we're continuing to work on what. The, the discussion around what would a standalone policy of equity, anti-racist, they're all so many different things. For reading, learning. And really trying to find the best way forward.
Awesome. Thank you. It gives me a really good sense of where things are at. I just have one follow question for, for Paul Ray. Have his policy committee. Curved students on racism or any racist incidents that are happening on this bridge. Get a sense of what might be needed to be changed or policies where have you had any student?
No. He does, like we talk. But especially standalone policy, I think that's when you probably. Getting the student input through the student leadership, you know, to the student advancement. There's other ways to super dangle about being that well. Principals, students, students involved in that. Now, as you can see, it's still in this initial phase. I think we probably step more on. Right for me trying to summarize the back and forth because by the time you get through the first batch, you already have what you need. And so you can see what more leading topics they want to get for them, that they take a lot more. And when is your next meeting? Monday. Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that. I appreciate it. It's continuing to massage that. And with that policy. Any other discussion?
I'm just here to be right here.
What's that?
As soon as the, what? David reads. Well, David reads about the board reading, I was comment script. I think that was change. Because I believe before I say, says that the board may. Address an issue. That's being talked about. We need to go back maybe about a year or five one of those that really was a year ago. Because this just says. Comments from the board are. Are probably taking on a board advice and may or may. Have received action at a future meeting. Maybe I'm losing my memory, but years ago, this used to say that they are may. Not address topic. So let's still be fine one for a couple of years. Because if you want to. Yeah, because. Yeah, that's, that should, it used to say may.
I feel like, I feel like it's always been that we want that and you have.
Broken that rule? Because I know that we find a couple of years ago where it says. You may not, because we've got audience comments out here. It's like we never see anything back. I mean. If we had, we had to be.
What kind of like is on, like you don't want to end up in a confrontational situation.
I may like talk to somebody on there and I may want to say something else.
You can do that at any time, but I think in this environment, it might evolve into something unproductive. You end up in an army.
Well.
Everywhere here, years ago, there was a young kid and student in here. Talking about swimming and the kid, I mean. Broke down. I mean, he did the best kid, for us not to kind of say some things back. So that shouldn't just say we will not. Come to just say that we may or may not come. Because it's been good in here and they probably would like a little conversation.
It would be good to have some clarification on that because it's my understanding that we don't comment on it because. The topics presented are on the agenda and we want to have full transparency of the things that we will be discussing. And if it's not on the agenda, then it's not the transparency of what we're going to discuss. Perhaps I'm wrong and you guys can. Look and make sure that we're on the right track. Because I agree with you. There are times where I want to respond in a case. It's a part of the earth. And personal and uncomfortable, quite honestly, but I thought that that was our practice for a reason.
Go back, computer is fine. Well, I believe so. They are may not. I could be wrong, but I think it's first time we need to speak that.
I also think you have an opportunity to go up to that person during break.
Yeah, that's better heard than you should say.
I'll find a no. And people following up. All right. Announcement of next, the board meeting. The announcement, board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, the seventeenth, beginning six p.m. here in the central office room. At this time, I have the first public opinion act of origin for executive session. Coming about an explanation for the director's holding executive session for a specific special navigation action is not implicated. All will need to play some tests. How much time are we? For like minutes, about thirty minutes.
Yeah. All right.
That's one problem. I think that was, for whatever reason, it was tied to your computer. You were muted.
So earlier, so I'm a co-host. Earlier, her computer was having issues. She had to leave the meeting and rejoin. So probably. I mean, they might be listening to me right now. Who knows?
Yeah.
I gotta close all this down.
Because I can't start recording. Were there? Thirty minutes, so.
So what you're saying is you're bill gates.
I'm going to make that assumption too. Because I'm going home now. Because I'm going home now.